The agenda for approval, there are some changes. The Calvert County School Board will not be presenting tonight. And we will be discussing some administrative things after, after Ms. Welker presents the Calvert County Planning and Zoning Comprehensive Plan. So, Chris, did you have anything you wanted to bring up before I asked to approve the agenda? Which would be first on the agenda would be to approve our meeting minutes from September. Second would be Ms. Plummer Welker with the Calvert Planning and Zoning. Third would be some administrative discussion of schedule, et cetera. And then public comment if there is any.
For those members who may not have gotten the email I sent this afternoon, for anybody watching at home, we did not send the notice that's required to the adjoining property owners and those who live across the street from the school. And because of that, we believe it's not proper to go forward with consideration of the agenda item until we notify people of the meeting. So one of the administrative things I think you're referring to is hopefully setting a date or at least getting close to a date. I'm happy to say that the applicant is okay with all those dates that I sent you. Of course, their preference is to do it as soon as possible. So for those people at home, we didn't send out proper notice, a notice to the individual property owners that live in the neighborhood. And we need to do that and we'll do that before our next hearing.
Okay, so with that change to the agenda, are there any other comments on it?
I just have one comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is, is there a location where the neighborhood can go to access the plans? Where do they get the plans at?
That would be, Chris?
Yeah, well, normally we would have them in the town hall and online. And right now they're just online, they're on the town's website. So they're available there and I can't recall how to navigate. I cannot explain the navigation now, but it's there and it's fairly logical sequence of steps to get you to the plans.
And as I understand it, Chris has drafted a letter to the adjacent property owners. And I assume, Chris, I haven't seen the letter, that it includes where they can review the plans prior to the meeting.
Right, I had not drafted that letter yet, but we will right away in order to get a date set. But it does and it always includes a reference to where people can see the plan and read it. So it will just done too.
Good. As long as everybody has, you know, access to a computer, I'm good with that. But I was just hoping there was someplace they can go for a paper copy in case they can't. Can they go to the library or someplace to access paper plans?
I don't know what the library's policies are now.
They are open, they are open. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned that some people may not have access and I just want to make sure everybody has access, but yeah.
If I could just interject, the library's been very accommodating for us to leave our draft comprehensive plans before. So maybe they will for the Beach Elementary plans.
I think I would propose that we accommodate the residents with paper plans at the library.
Do you have that, Chris?
Yeah, I think it's a fine idea and we have a complete set for the public to review. So it would be more accessible there than in the town hall.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Move approval.
And the second?
A second.
Is there anyone opposed? And all are in favor, if you'll record that Fran. And we'll move to our first item, which is to approve the September 23 meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Has anyone not had a chance to look at them? Okay, hearing none of a motion to approve the minutes from September 23?
Motion.
Okay, and seconds?
I will second.
All right, is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, all are in favor of approving the September 23 meeting minutes. The third item on the agenda then is welcome Ms. Jenny Plummer Welker from the Calvert County Planning and Zoning to discuss and make us familiar with the county of, Calvert County's Comprehensive Plan, which I believe was approved last August. That is August of 2019. So without any further ado, Ms. Welker.
Good evening, very glad to be with you this evening. I just want to make a personal note, I volunteer when Beach Elementary is open. I volunteer with Dr. Schistler with the chess club. So I really appreciate the opportunity and missed the school board, but I hope to catch up when they do their presentation to you at another evening. I have prepared a slideshow, so if I could share my screen. I thought I'd go through the slides fairly quickly, that will give us more time to talk. So I've been with the Calvert County Planning and Zoning since 1994, just before the ice storm, so over 26 years. And Chris Jakubiak and I went to University of Maryland Baltimore County together many years ago. So you and I were classmates in political science classes. So this is, the comprehensive plan was a three phased process to adopt the county plan. And we started out with identifying issues, moved on to developing the plan. The plan went through many drafts and then finally the adoption phase. And both the planning commission and the board of county commissioners held public hearings and the public provided input. We did a series of workshops leading up to that develop the plan phase. This is a listing of the public input opportunities. We had everything from surveys to open houses to workshops. And then, of course, the opportunity to comment on the individual drafts. As you can see, we had quite a few drafts through 2017 through 2019. And as the chair mentioned, it was adopted in August 2019. So the mission of the county comprehensive plan is to maintain and/or improve the over quality, quality of life for all citizens of Calvert County. And there's three strategies there about promoting sustainable development, looking towards a stable and enduring economic base, and of course, health, safety and education. But one of the key aspects is the natural, cultural and historic assets of the county. I think some of you may be aware that the county has a very strong agricultural preservation program. So there are 10 visions, I'm not going to read through each of these. But two of the prime ones are the landscape being dominated by forested fields and our town centers are attractive, convenient and interesting places to live, work and shop. So those two themes about the forest and our agricultural and then also the town centers, they've been key themes way back to 1967, when the county's first comprehensive plan was developed. And we do recognize that the municipalities have their own planning and zoning authority. So I'm going to talk about town centers and explain how they are in the county's plan. The plan covers main topics such as, of course, land use, transportation, also housing. So we've got those, so I'm going to dive into the town centers. We've got the designations, then the boundary and expansions. And then I want to focus in on the one mile radius because that has an impact on the two municipalities. Basically, the town centers are designated growth areas. They're places for both businesses and for the higher density residential. Some of the town centers have water, public water, some have public water and sewers. So of course, those densities can be a bit higher than those without. And we've been directing growth to town center since the 1983 comprehensive plan. There was a concern in the 70s and 80s with the county growing very fast that there would be strip commercial development from Dunkirk down to Solomons. And one way to prevent that was to create the town centers. So technically, the municipalities of Chesapeake Beach and North Beach are considered town centers under the county plan, but because you and North Beach have your own planning and zoning authority, the county doesn't plan for the towns. The other town centers listed, Dunkirk, Owens, Huntington, Prince Frederick, St. Leonard, Lesby and Solomons come under the county commissioners' control. And over the decades, there have been master plans that have been developed for these areas. The first three were Dunkirk, Prince Frederick and Solomons. We have updated the Solomons plan and we're currently working on the update of the Prince Frederick plan. And Mr. Jakubiak worked on Lesby when that one was done, I believe it was stopped in 2002. This map shows the future land use areas for the county. So what's envisioned to happen over the next 20 or 30 years. Like to point out that the town centers, including the municipalities, are shown in purple. Along mostly the bay and the river are the green areas. Those are agricultural preservation areas, farm and forest, excuse me. Then the yellow areas are rural residential areas. And then there are some areas along the waterfront, our waterfront communities, such as Brooms Island, areas around St. Leonard, Long Beach, Calvert Beach, White Sands and such. These tend to be the older waterfront communities. They were often created before zoning was adopted in 1967. I want to focus in on a couple of the town centers that are nearby. Chesapeake Beach, one is Dunkirk. The town center is to expand. The future land use map shows the expansion to the northeast, with the park and ride, and then the northwest, which would include Dunkirk District Park. Moving on to Owens, Owens is sort of that, it's bounded by Maryland 2 and Maryland 260. And then the future land use map that was adopted expands to the northeast to include air land across Maryland 260. Now, these expansions don't happen automatically. It is the future land use map. The expansions would happen through changes in zoning. So the zoning map for the county would need to be changed. And then those lands incorporated into each of the town center master plans and their respective zoning regulations. Focusing in on North Beach and Chesapeake Beach, this is a cropped copy of the larger map that you saw earlier. So town center in purple and then the farm and forest in green. The areas that are in orange are designated as residential areas. So these are a focus, they're sort of in between the town center density and the rural residential, the yellow area. And then focusing even a little closer in, I created this map to show the future land use along with the one mile radius. The county's ag preservation program is based upon the transferring of development rights from farm and forest land to areas designated for growth.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing, I'm getting like every other word from Jenny.
Let me see if I move closer, does that help? Let me continue.
I'm fine on my end.
Okay.
So for the land use, the waterfront community is shown in blue. And then the residential areas around the town are in orange. And then the farm and forest is shown in green. The one mile radius for the new comprehensive plan for those town centers that have water and sewers, that includes North Beach and Chesapeake Beach, the one mile radius is to go away, it's in the zoning ordinance. And instead, that the higher growth, instead of being directed to anywhere within that one mile radius, it would be directed to the areas in orange, the residential areas. The staff and the consultant looked at the areas, basically very closely looking at geographic boundaries and topography and thought it would be a better strategy rather than an arbitrary one mile radius. And for these areas, it's actually one mile perimeter from the town boundaries to look at that, to areas where development rights could be transferred into. Projections, so we used the Maryland Department of Planning projections out to 2040 for both population and for households. The 2040 population is at 100,450. So just breaking that 100,000 sometime between 2030 and 2035. The, the projection for 2020 is 94,600. It will be interesting when the Census Bureau releases the census count for the county levels, which will probably happen sometime next spring, to see how close that projection was. Maryland Department of Planning updates their projections every three years. So we recently received a draft of projections from their data center to take a look at and comment on. This is a map of the highways and road network. And so the approach into Chesapeake Beach, Maryland 260 is identified as an arterial highway. There is no change from the previous plan. It's one of the major roads in the county besides Maryland 24, Maryland 24 and Maryland 231. We currently are working on the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan update and are preparing a survey to residents. And it doesn't have to be just people who reside in Prince Frederick. It's for anyone in the county who would like to comment because we recognize that Prince Frederick is the county seat and also the location of the hospital and other retail establishments. So I wanted, some of the questions are related to COVID and how people's commuting patterns may have changed because of that and how they expect it to occur after or through the pandemic. Moving on, one of the things the county adopted back in 1988 was adequate public facilities for both schools and roads. So when the school is considered overcrowded based upon its rated capacity, the county does not allow any subdivision in that area or any approval of a site plan that would allow for apartments or townhomes. And so the commissioners have directed staff as part of the adoption of the 2019 comprehensive plan to take a look at other facilities. So we will be looking at water and sewer, storm drainage, fire and emergency and law enforcement. They also added language to strengthen the regulations for schools and roads. And that concludes my slideshow and we really thank all the citizens. And I know we had some people from North Beach and Chesapeake comment during the time that we worked on the plan and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, can we maybe go around to our commissioners and see if they have any questions and then open it up to the public if they want to ask questions? So let me begin with Kathleen. Do you have any questions you'd like to direct to Ms. Welker?
Um, no, I don't have any, I don't have any questions.
Okay, great. Jeff Larson?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Cindy Greenold?
I have one question, well, actually several questions. The first question is about Dunkirk Park. The park that's going to be built east of, I guess you would say east of four. What, can you, can you go over what that incorporates as far as how many ball fields? And I assume that will be within our jurisdiction as far as, you know, our kids would be playing those fields or using those fields. So can you tell me what's going to be going into that park?
No, I cannot. The best person to ask is going to be Shannon Nazaal, our Parks and Recreation Director. She could give you the specifics on what is proposed there. There was, I was involved in the master plan. And so the public input was actually at Northeast Community Center for two different nights. But for specifics, I'm sorry, I can't answer as far as the number of ball fields. We do recognize that the Dunkirk District Park and the Ward Farm Active Park, it's, what's unique about the new park is that it's going to have both active and passive types of recreation available. So in addition to the ball fields and most of the active sports will be up front along Ward Road, there will also be trails and there's a pond and a stream. So there'll be nature watching that's available. I'm looking forward to hopefully a snowstorm when I can go cross-country skiing because I think it's going to have some, some great trails. The, so the parks are not intended to compete with each other, but to complement each other. And planning and zoning staff has been working with the Department of Public Work Staff to have bicycle and pedestrian connections between the two. And I'm very pleased to report that the Maryland Department of Planning awarded the county, did a successful application to the Maryland Bike Ways Grant. So the state has awarded $88,000 and that will be shared between looking at both Dunkirk and Prince Frederick for bicycle and pedestrian trails. But if you want actual specifics, I suggest that the town staff contact Shannon Nazaal.
Jenny, is the, the construction, I think it's the old Ward Farm, is that part of this?
The old Ward Farm is what the county purchased with proceeds. It's a rather long name and I honestly forget the whole name, but it's basically proceeds from the gambling funds from the Chesapeake Beach area that the state designated that to give to the county for the purchase of the land. And I believe we may be using open space funds for the actual development of the park.
Great.
The other question I have is, when you were talking about the schools, you were saying that we are not allowed to increase the density, pretty much, by not having subdivisions, whatever, with the current size schools that we have right now? Is that what you were saying or when you were identifying the public works? What were you saying about that?
Let me explain, so the county, county government has adopted adequate public facilities regulations for areas controlled by the board of county commissioners. The adequate public facilities regulations do not apply to the municipalities. So the municipalities can, but have not adopted adequate public facilities regulations for either schools or roads. What that does for the county side and it would be for municipality if a municipality so chose, chose to do so. It allows us a little bit of breathing room to schedule the school construction to accommodate the additional students in the schools. So for example, when a school is over capacity and that is the case in the northern part of the county, we look at both the, excuse me, we look at all levels. We look at the elementary schools, the middle schools and the high schools. And if one of those levels is over capacity, there's a time clock. So say if developer was proposing, you know, 100 lot subdivision, that subdivision would be put on hold until one of two things happened. The first would be if the school, for whatever reason, maybe there's, you know, large failings of students that go through the system that that passes through. And now that there's capacity in the school. And then that, that subdivision could proceed. There is a limit to the length of time the county can delay a subdivision. And for Calvert, that is six years, which is coincides with the, with our six year CIP. So after six years, if the school or schools are still overcrowded for that area, that development is allowed to proceed, provided it meets all other subdivision criteria.
Oh, okay, thank you, thanks Jenny.
Certainly.
Okay, Jeff, or I should say Jonathan, any questions you'd like to raise?
The only question I have is about the, basically Route 4. I think before the pandemic, there was some, I think the consensus is that the congestion is starting to build up. Wondering if there's any plan to widen that road in the future or anything? Do you know anything about that?
Yes.
To widen Route 4?
Maryland 24 has been widened. The first phase was in the Maryland 231 intersection and that was completed a number of years ago. The next section has just been completed and we're still, they're doing paving perhaps tonight. So the section between the, like the Dares Beach Road on up to Fox Run area has been widened to six lanes. That was called for in the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan that was adopted in 1989. And so there is a proposal to do another section, which would take the widening up to Stokely Road. However, it's contingent upon state funding. And unfortunately, this coming year, the state does not have funding for that type of construction in our area.
All right, so it's in the works, that's good.
Yes, it's being planned, it's just a matter of when the state has funding. I think the priority project that, that took a lot of focus in our area is the replacement of the Nice Bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
And Lori, Lori Blackwelder? Lori, are you there?
She's on mute.
Okay.
Hi Jenny.
Hello.
Can you hear me, okay. So I think I have three questions, maybe four. My first question is kind of piggybacking off of Cindy. And so I know like Huntington High was recently redone, Calvert High was recently redone and Northern High School was recently redone. And there's a lot of construction going on in Prince Frederick. So as far as capacity, how are those schools doing with capacity issues?
So Northern High School has been over capacity for a number of years and we had hoped that the construction of the new school would alleviate that. However, the state reduced the amount of funding for that school construction. So the school is not as big as originally anticipated. So currently, the, from the spring report, we do reports twice a year. I'm going to ignore that for the moment. We do reports twice a year, so the next one will be due out in a few weeks. It'll go one more ring, I think, sorry. There we go. And so it'll be interesting to see if there's been capacity that now, if Northern High School now has capacity for that area. I don't have the report in front of me, so I can't remember, I don't remember. But there was, I think, another school in the northern area that was over capacity. I'd be, I'd be glad to send Chris the link to the, to the current report so that you all could take a look at that. All the, the reports are posted to our planning commissioner's website back a number of years.
Okay, so it's, we can find it on the website then?
Yes, under our county government page, there's a planning and zoning section. And then the planning and zoning section, there's a development review. It's probably best that I just send you, Chris, a link and you can forward it. But there is a whole, whole area devoted to adequate public facilities for schools. We report to the planning commission and county commissioners in April and then in November. And we work closely with the school board, so I work closely with Sujita Warner on the development of the report.
Okay, so that checks off number one. Number two and three has to do with waterfront communities in our area. So I was wondering if you could elaborate more on any plans for Summer City, which was designated as the waterfront community? And then also Breezy Point, which I think also has some kind of town center coloring on it as well?
I think the Breezy Point may have the waterfront community, it's, it's, it's not a town center. So the, for, the identification of waterfront communities recognizes that these already exist. We didn't go out and create in a new area, a waterfront community. So it's recognizing the development pattern that has already happened. So it's recognizing the development pattern that has already happened. And what now that the plan has been adopted, there are other county staff working on the update to the zoning regulations. And so they're going to be taking a close look at what can be allowed or not allowed in the waterfront communities. And it may be that there needs to be a little bit of a distinction between two, kind of two different types. We have waterfront communities that are solely residential. And then there's some waterfront communities that may have a restaurant or arena included with them. So my counterparts are currently looking at the proposed zoning designations. Think of the future land use map as as a painting with a very large paintbrush. And now that that plan has been adopted, the zoning staff is going and looking at parcel by parcel and using a very fine paintbrush and and creating additional categories within those main categories. So I would say stay tuned. The zoning ordinance, the staff has been working with our consultant and anticipates to have a draft out to the public by the end of this year. So that'll go into the actual details. The the plan is the vision where it's actually the zoning ordinance that gets into the rules and regulations.
Okay. So my next question, and then I'll have like kind of a comment to tie into that. I noticed that you have the artery roads and then you have the other yellow roads on your map, and I forget what you called them, but they the artery roads are red and the other ones are yellow. And so what is the plan for those roads? Are you planning to, I see some biking mentioned on bike paths and pedestrian accommodations and the comprehensive plan for Calvert County. So are any of those yellow roads going to be able to get shoulders and bike paths and such?
I believe this is the map you were referring to, the road classification. So the comprehensive plan, and I've got my copy right here, it's available on the website. So it puts out broad goals and objectives and then action items. And so there's there's broad goals about improving safety of the roads and ensuring that there's an adequate road network. The challenge with our county, and I would say the challenge with with Chesapeake Beach is that the topography really doesn't allow for many new roads or such. And those areas that could possibly accommodate new roads have issues like wetlands and steep slopes. So the 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 plan is the county's, I call it the umbrella plan. It's the overall policy document. There are other plans that come under the comprehensive plan that go into much more detail. And so there is a Calvert County Transportation Plan. And that was just recently adopted by the county commissioners this spring. So we waited till after the comprehensive plan was adopted and then staff worked with consultant Savarin Associates to develop the plan. It goes into much more detail and analysis than the comprehensive plan. The the dark yellow, the orange areas are those the collector roads. So those are areas which have like subdivision entrances and such on it.
So I think based on am I can you hear me?
We picked up an echo.
I think maybe I'll switch the computer on.
Also, if anybody's not speaking, if you could put yourself on mute. Go ahead, Lori. Oh, now you're on mute.
While we wait for Lori, let me break in here. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and then we'll get Lori back maybe and then open it up to any of the members of the public that are online. You talked about the one mile radius for town centers. I'm not, it's not clear to me what what the purpose of that is, what it's what it does.
Certainly. So the one mile radius is a key component of our agricultural preservation program. So development from the farm areas, from the forest areas directed to those doesn't need it growth areas, which includes our town centers and also the one mile radius around the town centers. For like Huntington and St. Leonard, it's truly a radius from a center front. Chesapeake Beach, North Beach is the perimeter. For those that are on the phone, perhaps I think it's star six to mute.
Okay, so second question. In as I was reading county's comprehensive plan, we talked about waterfront communities. And it says that TDRs may not be used to permit additional dwelling units in these areas. May not be used. And so could you talk about that for a couple of minutes? Because I know a couple of the commissioners are concerned about TDRs. And if you'd maybe address how that might affect Chesapeake Beach.
So for the waterfront communities, I believe it's so that it doesn't permit additional density. If there is an existing lot, that certainly can be built upon. People have a right to build on platted lots. But I think the intent is that the waterfront communities don't become growth areas with the use of of development rights being transferred to the farms. As I mentioned, the waterfront communities are tended to be created prior to zoning. So most of them are on small lots. And I know with the Dares Beach, there was an issue with septic. So the county, probably a decade or more ago, ran a sewer line out to Dares Beach to take care of those failing systems.
Okay, and let's see. I think that's it for me. Lori, did you want to make another comment?
My last question had to do with tourism, but I think I'm going to get kind of the same answer that there's a segment of the planning department that's planning specifically for that.
No, actually not. So the Economic Development Department has a tourism staff that's devoted to tourism. Hillary Daley is the tourism specialist. And I work closely with Hillary. We both serve on the Southern Maryland Heritage Area Consortium. And that is looking at the the whole southern Maryland area, so Calvert, Charles and St. Mary's. And we are currently looking towards national heritage area designation, which would take an act of Congress. So we're currently exploring that idea. But tourism, I do know that they are looking to advertise and market specifically to our local region. Because of COVID, many people aren't taking long-distance vacations and are staying fairly close to home. And so we live real close to the metropolitan Washington and DC area, so looking for those day trips. And with the with tourism, you know, North Beach, Chesapeake Beach is definitely a key destination. And we have some historic areas. And in fact, I've worked with Grace Mary Brady on the Bayside Museum. They've been a recipient for a variety of different things. So and it's a way to bring in revenue to the county, to the towns. And the longer they stay, the more they spend.
Hey. I have a I have something to add to that, if I could. You know, with the tourism, with the with the new short-term rentals like Airbnbs, the county does permit permit those or because I know we don't have a lot of hotels in the area. So I think if we want to increase tourism, we they would definitely help out.
That's part of the zoning ordinance regulations, which relates to renting one's home out and whether the owner lives on or off-site. I know Airbnb's or that type of short-term rental has been an issue. And that the zoning staff is looking at that closely during the update to the regulations.
The current county zoning address short-term rentals? Or is that something new that would be added to the zoning rules?
The zoning ordinance, the most recent version, not the amendments, but the most recent version, I believe, was adopted in 2006. So that predates the actual, you know, term Airbnb or the short-term rentals. So we're looking to update the regulations to address that. They have to meet the current regulations. But certainly, you know, technology and terminology has moved forward. If I could circle back to Lori's comment about tourism, there is a five-year strategic plan that the Economic Development Department puts forth. I don't recall if tourism is one of the three aspects noted in there. Town centers certainly are. But there's also the Calvert County Economic Development Advisory Commission. And they meet, I think it's bi-monthly, once every two months. And so they have members of different segments of the business community on that board. So I would recommend if you are specifically interested in that, that you give Hillary Daley a call at the Economic Development Department. I'm sure she'd be glad to answer any specific questions you may have. Nope, you're on mute.
Okay, so are there any members of the public that would like to ask questions? And if you do, would you please state your name? Maybe spell it out for our recorder friend so she can get it down correctly.
Comment and question? Yeah, Greg Morris, Councilman Greg Morris, town Chesapeake Beach, 2425 Woodland Court.
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, Jenny, thanks for sharing your time tonight. Look at you here. I'm glad to see our planning and zoning is engaged and asking questions. I mean, this is a wonderful lesson in future planning for us all. Seems like we're running a little bit parallel on a few things. As an exercise, I'll probably go back and listen to your presentation again, particularly the Q and A. That's a really great thing about the Zoom. And I'd like to commend Holly for organizing all these meetings. They're can't be simple, you know, one little wrong turn and there's a lot that can go wrong. There's a lot to glean from valuable county efforts here in tonight's discussion. I love the county's commitment to green open parks. I hope to see our Kellam's Field as an open green space in the future. One question, one question that I had during the presentation, you were talking about population growth. And I'd noticed, I don't know the exact number, I think currently you were showing 95,000, 96,000 maybe population in the county. In five years from now, you were projecting, well, the county is projecting only a few percentage higher over five years. What is that? I know the census is coming in and that'll play a factor, but what's the future population growth based on?
So we rely on Maryland Department of Planning's projections. So they look at it for a statewide perspective and then they narrow it down to the specific counties. So they are looking at, they have a demographer there. And they look at births and deaths and migration in addition to just so the natural increase. So that's what they base their estimates on.
And I suppose the, I mean, I'm certainly agreeing in all of this. The population, the forecast of population growth, I guess you tried to dovetail actual residential growth and availability somewhat. They kind of linked along the path there once your plan is adopted.
Any change, I think, in the zoning, you know, could affect the the population. But one thing with the counties, we've we'd look to balance that out with the transfer of development rights. So looking towards directing growth out of the rural areas and into the town centers. The county's town centers before the 2019 plan was adopted included just 3% of the county's landmass. And with the proposed, the expansions as they were proposed, it's about 5%. With the county not having a lot of water and sewer throughout the rest of the county, there's not really that much opportunity for a large population growth. We rely on septic systems for a majority of our areas. And so with that, it's not like there's going to be a massive increase. Like we're going to double the population in the next 20 years. It's just, I don't think, because of the limitations on the sewer, not something that would happen.
I'm sure there are a lot of people that are pleased with that. There's so much to know about this topic. And but I won't keep you anymore. I appreciate you coming down tonight and spending your time. Welcome to Town Hall. Welcome to Chesapeake Beach. Have a safe drive home.
Certainly look forward to seeing everybody in person. I want to see if there's any other questions. I think Lori was muted when she was trying to speak. If there's anything else I can answer for Lori. Oh, you're still on. Perhaps you could write it in the chat box and I'd be glad to to answer it that way. Oh, there you are.
I mean.
Yes, there you are.
Okay, sorry about that. Gosh, I'm usually not so bad at these meetings. So I was just going to comment that potentially maybe our three beaches to include Breezy could possibly get some synergy because Maryland Route 261 is a scenic byway. And we get a lot of, I guess, Peloton-style bikers that I think would love to do like a three- beach ride. And we would love to get a shoulder and a bike path down that lane, especially in the area of Summer City, because that area is getting really dangerous. People are walking into town from Summer City and they're doing it late at night. And I think that could be a win-win in two categories if we could just get, you know, a biking road and some some big shoulders on 261. So that was my comment.
Thanks for sharing that. I think so the county prepares priorities for the Maryland Department of, sorry, Maryland Department of Transportation each year. In fact, Secretary Ron will be meeting, I'm not sure if it's in person or virtually with the commissioners on November 6, I think it is. Let me double check. So perhaps if you are passionate about that, you could send off a note and saying you suggest what you just suggested to me. And perhaps it could work in its way into the priorities for the county as far as our annual request to the state. I think the state's revenues are going to be a bit slim this year because of COVID. So but that's a long-term project. But I'd never thought about how the synergy with between Breezy Point and Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. But that's a that's a great idea. So please share that with Hillary also. And it is Tuesday, November 10th is the the transportation tour. So the secretary visits each of the counties in the fall. And our turn is coming up soon.
Okay, so just email her that comment, you think? Okay, thank you.
We we have a very active walkable communities committee here in Chesapeake Beach, of which Lori is an active member. And some of our county city councilmen are also. And so we're we're very excited about that. And that will be a big section in our comprehensive plan when it's done.
That's great. I remember being at the groundbreaking for the rail trail and that's such a fabulous. And that's such a fabulous asset for the town. And may I suggest, Laurie, my counterpart, Tamara Blake Wallace, she's our transportation planner. She would be also someone to contact. There is the, through the Tri-County Council, there is a bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure committee. So she is our liaison with that committee, and that would be a great suggestion for them.
Great, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else, the public, that would like to ask questions?
Larry, I'm not the public, but I'd like to ask a question. It's Kathleen.
Please, yes.
Jenny, I was just wondering, I'm new to the council. So all of this information is great, and I'm also a biker. So if I could, maybe you could give Fran that email address or direct me where to send an email. I would definitely support that because it does get a little thin on this side of the road at times, and especially along Summer City. But my, my other question for you was, you said you've been with Calvert County for 26 years. And I was wondering, is there trends that you see now? I mean, like, for example, I would imagine that the, that biking is a lot more of a, a recreation activity today than it was previously. And I was just curious if there's other trends that you've noticed over, over, over time? And if they're, they repeat themselves or they're just, they're new?
Thanks for the question. I'm not sure that they repeat themselves, but they are new. I will say that I'm an avid bicyclist. And the southern, the initial Southern Maryland Bicycle Map that tried, that we worked on through the Southern Maryland Heritage Area was basically done on my kitchen table in St. Leonard. But, and then we sent it off to UMBC to get the cartography staff to create it. So I've been very aware of the, you know, the bicycling and perhaps the, the lack of the comfortable areas to bicycle in the county. So with, with the COVID-19, what we've seen is a huge increase in the interest in outdoor sports. So my understanding and actually my observation from, I was just recently at Mallo's Bay in Charles County, there are many new people to the kayaking, canoeing, and paddle-up stand, stand-up paddleboard activities. I know Fishing Creek's a, a very nice place to paddle. And talks with the Director of the American Chestnut Land Trust. Through, you know, that height of COVID this spring, they have experienced a four-times increase in the number of people using the trails. For a long time, the trails were just really not well-known. But with people, you know, only being able to go out and exercise, they definitely were found. I'm not sure if the, the committee members and others present on the call and on the meeting are aware, but there is a trail called Prince Frederick to the Bay Trail. I can literally step out of my office, walk down Main Street, and I can walk six miles and go take a look at the bay. You can't quite stick your toes in it, but the, there's a bay overlook. So in essence, one can do a 12-mile hike. And you're, once you, the access point is through St. John Bianni's property. And then it, it continues on through some preserved properties and then on to American Chestnut. It does cross the, the power lines. But that's just a fantastic walk. If you haven't done it, I highly recommend it. And so there's just a huge amount of increase in the interest in being outside, walking, bicycling, and paddling. And I think Chesapeake Beach is well-positioned for attracting that kind of people who are interested in those activities.
Thank you. Great information.
Welcome.
Jenny, I have a couple of questions for you.
Certainly, Chris.
Thank you so much for coming. It's great to see you again. So I'm interested in the orange area around Chesapeake Beach and North Beach, and what the county's policy is and how things might change. Because that is essentially the area that the county would direct residential development toward. And in part through the transfer of development rights to allow increase in density in that area. So obviously, that area is on the town's edge. If the town does a good job controlling growth, that growth may actually end up on the county side of the municipal boundary. Same for North Beach. So can you just give me a sense of what the policy is about all of that? And, and, and I wonder if you've done a build-out analysis of, of that land and what level of development it could actually handle?
Thank you for the question.
Sure.
So the, and I apologize, I was, I, I created this map today. And based on the scale of our GIS program, I wasn't able to capture all the way up to the Anarundel County line. However, you can see the orange areas. There's, so instead of being the, the whole one-mile radius, and in this case, the perimeter, we swapped it out. And it's, I'm not sure if it's one-to-one here or not, but I, I, just looking at it, I don't think so. So it's narrowing the amount of land that, that could be used for transfer areas. And the the 83 plan actually had town centers, but also towns. And so the area around the town centers were to be for residential growth. And so, and I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers, but I think if you're within a one-mile radius and you have a certain category of zoning, leave it's you can increase to four units per acre. That's what the county staff working on the zoning update is looking at closely now. There's not been an analysis of the North Beach and Chesapeake Beach one-mile radius versus the residential area. I do know staff has just done an initial review, I believe it was of the St. Leonard Town Center, to compare the one-mile radius area. Since St. Leonard is, was considered a minor town center, it, it still has its one-mile radius. It doesn't have residential area, like this orange area around it. That was one of the significant changes that the commissioners did when they adopted the plan in August 2019, was they consolidated the major and minor town center designation into just town center designation. Originally, when the concept was developed in the mid-'80s, major town centers like Chesapeake Beach were those that had public water and sewer. And minor town centers had public, maybe had public water or, or not, but they didn't have sewer. In the mid-'90s, the county changed that, did an amendment so that all town centers, whether they were majors or minors, could have public or, public water or sewer based upon their town center plan. So I, what you might, what I would suggest you take a look at here is the green area that surrounds, almost surrounds Chesapeake Beach. That is the Farland Forest area. Many of the properties in that area have been permanently preserved through the county's Transferal Development Rights Program. So there is some orange area adjacent there near Chesapeake Village. So I don't see that there'd be a, a lot of growth happening on the west side of the town.
The, the, the orange area coincides with the water and sewer area too, so that the county could extend its share of the capacity in the wastewater treatment to, that, that's what you would need to get to four units per acre is municipal water and sewer.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we, I think when we were updating the St. Leonard Town Center Plan, it was basically, even though four units were allowed, it was likely perhaps only two or three based upon the soils and the recovery area needed for septic areas.
Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, are there any other questions from any other person on the, on the phone? I had one more. Your, the County Comprehensive Plan talks about wetlands. Could you describe what, because we have a significant amount of wetlands within Chesapeake Beach town limits? Could you talk about the county's program or plans for wetlands?
Basically, the plan is to not develop in them. To restrict development in the wetland area. We actually zone, the county zoning map identifies wetland areas and prohibits development in those areas.
Okay, so that's, that's, there's no plan for preserving them or protecting them. It's just that they won't be developed.
There are regulations that prevent development of wetlands. And often wetlands are also floodplain areas. So there's also the floodplain regulations.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm, I'd like to take this opportunity, want to thank you for letting me meet with you this evening. I'd also like to recognize Holly Wall. She did an absolutely fantastic job with census outreach. And I understand there was a little competition between Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. And based upon the numbers I saw at the final census count, it looks like Mayor Mahoney is going to get some tacos from Mayor Benton. And margaritas.
I'm sure.
Margaritas, right.
So, but Holly, thank you very much for all your work on the Census Complete Count Committee. You just, you did an awesome job. And I'm glad the town was able to get a grant from the Maryland Department of Planning through Maryland Historic Trust to help boost that outreach.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll move on with our agenda. Let's see, the next things that I wanted to discuss. First of all, one of my concerns, the, these are administrative things for the commission. One of my concerns has been our, our public outreach. We haven't had that many members of the public come to our meetings when we were holding meetings and, and attending our Zoom sessions. So two things I've done is worked with Holly. And we're going to be a little more aggressive in getting our agenda published on, on the website early so that the public knows what we're going to be talking about ahead of time. I'd like to move that agenda earlier and earlier so that people can plan on things and become aware of it. The other thing I've done is on the website, we now have a, an email link which reads planning@chesapeakebeachmaryland.gov. So if you go on our, on the planning and zoning page, you'll see you can click on this, this web link. And it will allow people to send an email that will go, I believe, to Fran, who will then forward it to me or to the appropriate commissioner for answers. Also, they've added on our website, you can click on my name on the list of commissioners and send me an email directly. And your concerns, your comments. And, and then I will, it comes directly to me and I will take action on that. If other commissioners would like to have a similar arrangement, they're welcome to do that either through me or you can talk to Holly about adding, adding that to your name on the planning and zoning website. Do the commissioners have any other ideas on how we can extend the outreach and get more public participation?
I think that's a great idea, Larry, as far as publishing the agenda sooner. I, I, you know, I know for myself, there's a lot of information to read through. And, and, and it helps to have some time to look at it. And then you can actually formulate opinions and also talk with your neighbors about it, for sure. Because I know people erroneously, now, my neighbors realize I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they ask me questions, you know, totally like, the road was blocked due to construction. And they were like, Kathleen, how can you help us with that? So I think that would, that would be a, a great idea. And, and maybe also, I don't know, posted at the library might be helpful as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry, I think that was a really good idea and a good initiative by you too. The only other thing I can think of is when we have something, you know, that we think is going to have a lot of public interest. I think the playground coming up, some, some other things that have a lot of public interest, the school. We could maybe ask the mayor to include it in his, his videos. And that's, that's another way for just certain events, certainly not everything, but.
Okay.
That's my two cents.
Thank you.
I was thinking maybe, maybe put a little blurb in the town council meetings about it. Just say when our next meeting is for people that watch those meetings.
You mean at, at the town council meetings? Mention it.
Yeah, just, just like a little 10-second segment of when our next meeting is for anybody that's interested.
Okay.
Larry, this is Kathleen again. Maybe it would be good to just reiterate what, what is the role of planning and zoning? And, and, and maybe some ideas of why a community member would want to participate? Like, just, like, do you know what the Planning and Zoning Commission does? Maybe you have a concern about your neighbor's rental? Or maybe there's a concern about area construction? You know, give them some questions that might pique their interest as to why they would want to participate with us.
All right, thank you.
Did you see Greg's comment in the chat?
No, I didn't.
He said the Cork Board at Rowland's.
Okay. All right, let me see. The next thing I wanted to discuss is, I know, I believe most of you got an email from Holly talking about the Open Meetings Act and a course that you can take. It takes us two to two and a half hours to complete the course. I did it this afternoon. But it tells you, helps you understand better what our responsibilities are as public officials, commissioners, in keeping the public informed on, on our activities and our decisions. So I would encourage you to look at that course. If you don't, if you've lost that email or didn't receive it, I can forward information about it. But it's, it's a pretty interesting course. And let's see, the next thing. I was looking at our schedule. If you check the town website, says that our next meeting is the evening before Thanksgiving. And the meeting after that is the evening before Christmas Eve. Neither of which I think works very well. I could probably do that, but I wanted to open that up to the commissioners to see what your preferences are. Let me say a few more words. We've, at the beginning, we talked about notice for the presentation on the Beach Elementary School and how the letters have to go out. It requires a 10-days advance notice before the issue can be decided by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that means at least 10-days from now is the earliest we could. So that means at least 10 days from now is the earliest we could uh, discuss and make a decision on the Beach Elementary School. Chris has uh, looked at the calendar and he suggested we could have a meeting on, uh, I believe it's Tuesday, the 10th of November, Thursday, the 12th. I believe it's Tuesday, the 16th. Or the 23rd of November.
It's Monday, the 16th, Larry.
Monday is the 16th, okay. So uh, my preference is to do it earlier and get, get this uh, off our calendar, off our uh, agenda, which would be either the 10th or the 12th. I'd like to hear from other commissioners if you have your, your thoughts on uh, when we can meet next. I would expect that that would replace the November meeting that is currently the day before Thanksgiving. So, any thoughts from the other commissioners?
I would um, vote for either November, the 10th or the 12th.
Okay. Anyone else, thoughts, preferences?
I like the 12th.
Okay, the 12th.
So do I.
All right. Cindy, Lori, any preference?
Either.
August?
No, either.
Either, okay. And uh, Cindy, you don't have a preference? Yes, no? All right, well, let me say then that we'll have our next meeting on November 12th. Believe that's a Thursday and that will replace what would have otherwise been the November meeting. And let's see, um, the holidays being what they are. I, I just don't personally think that December is a good time to have a meeting. But I'm open to any commissioner thoughts on that.
I think we need to keep going on this uh, comprehensive plan if we wanna get finished. I, I think if we skip another month, we're, we're really behind, we're already behind.
Oh, we're way behind. Let me, so let me, let me talk about that for a second. I'm uh, at a certain level of frustration and disappointment at how far we have not come in the two years that I've been on the commission. We're still, uh, I mean, the last draft we had to review was, I think, dated January. And we've only got uh, four, I think, chapters, five chapters that aren't, that aren't complete uh, to review. So, a, a suggestion I would like to make is uh, that we uh, form two-person teams to take up uh, a, a chapter for each team and to work on that uh, the next couple of months and try and uh, come to some conclusion on that. And I would suggest that one team take up uh, chapter four, the natural environment. Another team, look at the land use and housing. And another team, look at transportation. I personally would uh, whichever one I end up with, if that's agreed, would uh, basically go to the, the county and other towns and look at the ideas that they presented and, and uh, cut and paste together a proposed uh, say, transportation chapter so that we can, uh, we can move forward with this. And my, my thought would be, if the commission likes that idea, that uh, we could uh, then we, we wouldn't have, as two people teams, we would not uh, be required under the Open Meetings Act to uh, to have notice and comment and uh, public meetings. We could individually, as, as teams, meet and work on these chapters. And then we would present the chapters in an open meeting for the public to uh, comment on and, and review. And I would suggest that we could maybe do that in January for those three chapters, which would get us closer to uh, the end of the project. But as Cindy pointed out, we are, in my view, way behind. Any comments?
First, can I comment that the 12th happens to be Veterans Day? Do we know that that's a holiday? Does it matter to anybody that we are meeting at? By the way, does Jenny wanna stay for our meeting? I don't know if she wants to be, be dismissed and she's, poor thing is sitting here listening to our meeting. I don't know if she wants to go through all this boring administrative stuff, but anyway.
Cindy, Veterans Day is the 11th.
Is Veterans Day the 11th? Cause I have, on my calendar, it says the 12th, but okay, so the 11th, okay, very good. Um, so did we confirm the 12th, first of all, that we're gonna do the meeting on the 12th? Or what did we decide on that?
Yes, I think we've decided on the 12th. I, I heard no objections to that.
And going back to this, um, my idea on this two-person committee idea, um, it sounds like homework to me and it doesn't sound fun at all. Why, why can't we instead have a workshop where we do another meeting where we have workshop? And then Chris can maybe get us through some of these issues and he's got the expertise. Maybe it would be easier if Chris could just get us through on a, on a workshop. Is that a possibility, Chris? A Zoom workshop?
Uh, yes, absolutely. And that's certainly, certainly the path we're on right now.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking if we added a meeting, a workshop in between our other meetings, maybe we should do that. Because I can't, and I can't imagine us during the holidays wanting to try and do, you know, homework like that. I hate to, at least that's my opinion. I don't know.
And November's meeting is gonna be swamped with the site plan. I'm sure it'll take an hour to get through.
Right, right.
So what, uh, you're, you're proposing another, or you're suggesting another meeting?
Maybe at the, at the end of November, could we, or at the beginning of December? Is there a reason why we can't meet at the beginning of December? I mean, I, holidays really don't start until middle of December. I mean, I could certainly meet in the beginning of December. So we could have a workshop in the beginning of December and then have another meeting? I mean, I, I am, I, I mean, I know we're busy in the holidays, but I don't see why we can't spend uh, a day in December or two days in December to try and get this accomplished? Is, is it a problem for everybody to do that? I don't hear any, is anybody hearing me or am I like on mute? Nobody's talking, it's like, uh, what happened here?
I don't mind having.
Well, this, Kathleen, um, I, I think, you know, one thing we could do certainly is for that meeting uh, in December, I agree that the uh, the eve of the holiday is not good. So maybe we could have our regularly scheduled meeting, the 16th. And then maybe we could meet the first or second week to have the workshop. Um, I, I certainly am open to it. And I would, I would love the guidance um, of Chris to kinda walk through some things cause um, I think I'd probably be the uh, the weaker member of the team on the review, but uh, so that's my thought.
So Chris, would, what would you have to present or to, to talk about or work on the first week in December?
The finished land use section and transportation.
So, so when, when do you think you would have? Uh, I mean, the, the current land use section, it's not finished, is that correct?
No, I, I think we had a breakthrough at the last meeting and um, so now we know what to write and it's sketched out and um, it's just not finished.
Okay, so.
It's a matter of packaging it up and getting it out to you.
Okay, and the trend, and you could have the finished land use section and the transportation section ready for us to, uh, when, when do you think you could have the, that, so that people could read through it ahead of the workshop so they know what we're talking about?
Right, um, well, are we talking about the first week of December?
Uh, the first or second week of December.
Yeah, so um, 10 days before that, in either case, it works just, just fine. So if it's first week of December, then it'd be roughly uh, the end of uh, the third week of November, roughly the, the 20th of November.
So if we said the 9th of December, uh, that would uh, mean we would get it for review after Thanksgiving. Not immediately after Thanksgiving, but uh, shortly after Thanksgiving.
First of all, I, I can't make it on the 9th of, um, but I, I, I could on the 10th or the 8th. But um, yeah, in that case, it would be just after Thanksgiving or literally probably just before Thanksgiving. Either the 20th, the 19th, 20th, or the 23rd, something in that neighborhood.
For a meeting or for?
Or so that you, so that you'd have the reports to read.
Right, so it, it, see, from, from our earlier discussion, it seemed like Thursdays are better for some of the commissioners. Is that uh, right?
Fine, Wednesday or Thursday. We could do the second, December 2nd, which is another Wednesday. Can you do that, Chris? Can you do the 2nd of December, a Wednesday?
Yes.
Why don't we do the second, why don't we try for the 2nd of December?
Okay. All right. And is there any objection to the 2nd of December?
No, there's no objection for me, but my, the only comment that I wanna make about um, is it, it's really helpful. I know Chris said that he could get the documents out, but I, I think it, it, it would be really helpful in the future when there's items to review. Um, I mean, not every, you know, not everybody's retired, but to have the documents like more than the day before the actual meeting because um, you don't know other people's schedule and, and they might have other commitments. But I, I think it's a little bit tough when you have a, a document or two or three documents to read and really give, you know, valid input and able to review them if you, if you don't have enough time to look at them. So that, that's my only request.
That's a great point, Kathleen. They, I mean, we're talking about 40 or 50 pages worth of materials in the land use and the uh, transportation section. So it, I would, you know, we've gotta have at least 10 days, I would say, uh, from the time we get it to uh, uh, when we can sit down and discuss it.
Thank you.
Larry, may I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so um, I kinda have a, a idea based on your idea that might be a little bit more productive and allow for some more time and some more comments to get incorporated into the plan before we actually have a meeting about it. So um, if Chris were to put what he thinks is the draft, and I actually have something that I'd like to submit to you, Chris. But if, if you could put that together and then we could read it and then we could send our comments through Larry to you or just anything but to each other, cause we're not allowed to do that. Then at least you might know our comments. You can pick and choose which ones you feel are valid. And in the meeting, you could address why, you know, why you chose one thing versus the other. And then maybe in, early January or sometime in January, after we've gone through that two-step process, we would just have the, the few little things left to tie up on that land use plan. Rather than try to, you know, kinda do what we've been doing and have, you know, this plan in front of us and maybe not everything is working for us and then trying to discuss it that way. Maybe just one iteration of email comments.
But I think the problem with that, Lori, is that then we don't feed off, we, I don't get your comments. In other words, we need to feed off each other's comments. So we're not getting the benefit of your comments if you just go directly to the chairperson and we are not part of that. So I, I mean, that's the limitation of, of that suggestion, I think.
Yeah, the Open Meetings Map, the Open Meetings Act is, is killing us in this case cause it would be nice to just hash it out, but that gets messy. So I don't, yeah. I think if we do it in December, we will have another draft and a whole lot to talk about all at once again.
Well, I, I'm trying to thread the needle here. If we, if we go with the plan that Cindy and Chris have proposed, it's still, that, as I, as I see it, that puts a, a draft of chapter five and six in our hands before Thanksgiving. And then a meeting on the 2nd of December. And it doesn't mean that we have to, have to decide it if there's a, if the comments are, if there's, you know, so many things that need to be addressed. And we can uh, meet again in early January to uh, to resolve any, uh, any disputes or issues or concerns.
And in the two weeks leading up to the December 2nd meeting, um, anybody can send comments to me so I'm prepared to answer them at the meeting or to expand upon them. Provide data to help answer the, a question about any topic. So it's, it's not as if uh, everything stops while you have the draft. So you can certainly send me comments and um, I'll be prepared to talk about them.
Does that make sense, Lori?
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay. So, we have, I think, agreement, you know, pipe up if you, if you don't agree, but I think we have agreement for uh, a meeting on the 12th of November for the Beach Elementary. And then uh, Chris will get out a draft chapter or basically a close to finish chapter five and draft chapter six for us to look at before Thanksgiving. And then on the 2nd of December, we'll have another meeting like this. That'll be public notice and et cetera, uh, to discuss those two chapters. And we'll uh, see how close we are to uh, finished on those two chapters. And at that time, we'll schedule another meeting, maybe in early January to uh, uh, continue the comprehensive plan discussion.
And I might suggest that, although we don't have to decide this now, but um, we can make that December 2nd meeting as Cindy's described it as a work session, which means nobody else gets on that agenda. You've basically taken December off as a planning commission and you're deciding to work on the comprehensive plan by holding a work session. Uh, so if someone's got a site plan or, you know, they're, they'll be on the agenda beginning in January. So it's, you know, it's up to the planning commission, but that's one way to, so that we have a full two hours of time devoted just to comprehensive planning.
All right, well, that's done, well.
Can I ask another thing now? I, I know we said just one meeting in December, but I thought that would be a workshop. I think we should have a. I, I know we said just one meeting in December, but I thought that would be a workshop. I think we should have a second meeting in December. Like, I'm thinking the sixteenth, like Christine just, uh, I think it was Christina just said the sixteenth. I think we should have a regular meeting in December as well. Um, I still think, and remember, Larry, I was talking to you about uh, introducing on the agenda some uh different items other than the uh comprehensive plan. For example, zoning issues and possibly addressing the uh community identity idea. So there were some other things I wanted to bring on to the agenda possibly in December if we ha- have another meeting. We can't do it if it's a workshop, but we need to work on the, on the comprehensive plan for sure, early December. But I think if we had another meeting on the sixteenth, we can also add something else on to the meeting agenda other than comprehensive plan.
Okay, you had, you mentioned several things. Are these, are these ideas uh, close enough to be discussed by?
There are two things that I think we need to address pretty soon, Chris. I, I would like your opinion on this. Because we brought the idea of bringing the height limit down to thirty-five feet for uh, building height. I thought we should address that as a zoning issue now uh, and bring that in as a, a, a change at this point instead of waiting. So I thought we should.
Let me weigh in here a second. Um, how, we have this new meeting on November twelfth, which half of it is going to be taken up with uh Beach Elementary. Uh, uh, and I follow that with, after we finish this scheduling discussion, then I'd like to give Chris a few minutes to discuss his uh town center memo that you should have all received. Maybe just brief it, which kind of leads into uh what you're discussing about zoning for the height limit uh, in the town center. So uh, would, would you be prepared or ready to discuss this zoning proposal uh, on November twelfth? Or do we need another month to put the, the thoughts together?
Uh, are you, are you talking to me or Chris?
No, I'm talking to you.
Well, I'm, 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 I think we should start it as soon as we can. Yeah, I absolutely do.
Okay, well, let's, let's make that a second agenda item on November twelfth. Uh, if you'll, maybe we can talk separately what, what the title of that agenda item would be, but it uh, subject is basically zoning and height limits. Or height limit zoning, something like that.
Okay.
Now, you had one other item you were gonna.
Well, the other item I'd like us to start on or start thinking about is our community identity, because in order to go into signage, we need to have the identity down so that we can have a progression of uh thought as far as, you know, what the signage would look like. You need to really have that identity um, ascertained before that. So the next one would be the community identity.
Okay, and I know you, you had, you have a lot of thoughts on that. You, you've uh, you told me when you came to the commission, you had some ideas you wanted to present, so that would be something to discuss uh, at a second meeting in December. That, that's what you're suggesting.
We may not have, we may have to wait till January, because if we start on the zoning height, we'll have to continue that probably in December. I would anticipate.
Well, let me, let me, let me suggest this then. We'll, we'll plan on, we'll schedule the twelfth of November, we'll schedule a workshop on the second of December, and we'll leave an abeyance uh, the possibility of a second December meeting on the sixteenth, depending on uh, what we decide on December second.
December second was gonna be our workshop. We weren't gonna, okay.
And, but we'll have our thoughts together better, I think, on December second. People will know what they're doing, you know, they might be traveling, I don't know.
Well, the problem, though, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have an, an open meeting, I think you really want to make that sooner than later. I don't think you want to just give the public two weeks. I, I, I think the sooner we give notice, we're better on that as far as.
Well, we, I, I.
Public input.
With the notice, I'd like to give the public the subjects of that meeting so that the public can uh, be prepared to talk about it or uh, express their concern. So we need, we need an agenda for what the sixteenth would uh, discuss.
Well, we know that the comprehensive plan's gonna be on it. We know that. And we, and we were gonna be, we have to follow up, because even if we begin addressing on the agenda the height limitation, you, you're gonna have to bring that over to the next meeting. You can't conclude that on just, you know, the first meeting. That's gonna take a couple of meetings, uh, at least. So I would think you've got at least those items you want to put on the um, December twelfth meeting. Chris, do you have any input on that or no?
December sixteenth.
I'm sorry, sixteenth was, I'm sorry, sixteenth, sixteenth, yeah.
I think there'll be.
Yeah, I haven't heard from anybody else. So is, is anybody else agree, disagree, comments about having two meetings in December versus one? Any preferences?
Um, I'm not opposed to it. Uh, I think there are some things that we need to address, uh, like Cindy said. Uh, I have one or two things. I did have a question about the um, the concept plan that we got before uh, the COVID happens um, next to the water park with the condominiums. Now, if we, if we change the zoning on the height limit, um, that plan was submitted before the height limit change, and I believe that was over thirty-five feet. So how would we approach um, approach that situation?
Well, that would be something I think we discuss as the second item on November twelfth, but uh, Chris, have you'd be prepared to talk about that?
Okay, I will be.
Uh, any other thoughts on having two meetings in December? I hear no objections.
Larry, I, I, I don't want to pose an objection, and certainly you can meet without me, but the sixteenth I cannot meet. My Wednesdays are always bad, except for the Wednesday that's devoted to Chesapeake Beach and then the first Wednesday of the month. And, but this, again, the Tuesday before that or the, or the Thursday after that worked for me.
You're saying the seventeenth works?
Yes, eighteenth or seventeenth.
Yeah, okay, well, any objections to the seventeenth?
And I would say that before we lock it in, it's likely that the seventeenth is a town council meeting, because usually it's the third Thursday of the month. And even if we select tentatively the fifteenth, I would still like to run it by Holly to make sure that there's nothing else going on that night or some other reason why we couldn't do it. So it, maybe if we could select it as a tentative date prospectively, and then I could confirm with you.
Well, you're saying you can't, you can't make it the sixteenth and I just as soon not have a meeting, a second meeting, talking about the comprehensive plan or
Right.
Details without you there, so.
The fourteenth is good, fifteenth is good.
Say the fifteenth, Tuesday the fifteenth?
Yes.
Alright, so. Alright, so I've really heard no objections to this idea, so we'll uh, have a meeting on the twelfth of November, the second of, uh, workshop on the second of December. And uh, workshop slash meeting slash, TBD, on the fifteenth, Tuesday the fifteenth.
Larry, um, are we adding uh, agenda items to the December, uh, the second December meeting right now? Or can we, um, are we gonna wait till the next meeting to do that?
That's a workshop just for the plant, that's just a workshop for the uh, uh, the uh, comprehensive plan, right, Chris?
Yeah, the second meeting.
The second meeting.
Let me just say this in general. If any commissioner has uh, an issue that they would like to put on the agenda, if you'd send me an email, I will work that into the agenda, so.
Okay.
Uh, let me know what, for any meeting, okay? Uh, you guys drive the meeting agenda, so let me know what you want to discuss and uh, if you have an, have an agenda item, you're the presenter. Um, but uh, we'll, we'll get it added to the agenda. If possible, if there's time.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, the last thing that I have uh, on my list of things is uh, Chris had asked to say a few words about the uh, uh, the town center memo that he distributed at the, either today or yesterday. Um, so if you wanted to talk about that, that'll uh, kind of tee us up for follow-on discussion on the twelfth of November, Chris.
Okay, good. Uh, thank you. Uh, and I do want to share my screen. And I do appreciate the opportunity to talk about this tonight, because I, I, I need to move forward with it and um, I want to run it by you before we invest a lot of time in it. Um, can the commissioner see my screen now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so this is um, an illustration that attempts to capture the content of our discussion at the previous meeting about the vision of a town center that's generally low-scale, um, based uh, in large part on a community gathering place tied to a recreational amenity. And um, that fits compatibly, um, as opposed to the, the other option that we showed containing taller buildings, much like that was proposed with Harbor Vista South and North, um, which the planning uh, is rejecting for the town center. So I wanted to illustrate this and give you a sense of the possibility. So I, I'm gonna take you through this a little bit in some detail, and at any point, feel free to, to stop me and um, to weigh in on any details or questions. Cindy, I'm gonna be able to get really detailed, um, so you can get a close look.
Thank you.
Can you see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so that's the town, the town hall that exists today. Um, and every building like the town hall that exists today is simply shown in, in white and black, a line drawing. It's only the buildings that are um, new that have any color to them. And certainly this doesn't mean that these buildings, for instance, have to be built this way, but again, this is illustration to try to drive an agenda to capture what the policy would be. Uh, so uh, there's the town hall, as I mentioned. There would be a, there could be a street that would come off of uh, the current municipal driveway that leads back into the, the Kellums Field parking lot. And it could be a substantial avenue uh, to create a real connection between Kellums Field, the town center, and the rest of town. These buildings are shown uh, mostly on the Trader's parking lot. And it's not to say that that's how it gets built, but it does basically provide if, if Trader's ever wanted to develop its property more intensively, and of course, it's, it's able to now. It provides some guidance on how the town would like to see buildings oriented and arranged, and how the heights would be capped, and not at fifty or seventy feet, but at thirty-five. Um, and arranged in a way that led people from the main avenue, Bates High Road, into a town center approach with broad sidewalks and, you know, trees and open spaces. Uh, the way this is drawn is that you could come through a, this avenue, if you could follow my cursor here, uh, and around, a roundabout, uh, the roundabout allows you to come in, drop people off, and head back out, or to go out this way back to Gordon Stinnet. Or you could bypass the roundabout or go through the first part of it and go back to the parking lots that exist today. And actually, it could be expanded somewhat as well. There would be, under this concept, an important linkage between Gordon Stinnet Boulevard and this new street. Um, right now, that linkage is, is through a, a parking lot, as you know. But it could be through a street. And the way, the way that we've designed this is that it's actually a service drive and a parking area that buffers the rear of these buildings. Um, and then these newer buildings would actually um, present their rear to this service drive. So this is almost like an alley parking area. The main action happens, you know, on the corner of the buildings. This is very typical for this type of design. And then the fronts, the fronts face a plaza, a community open space. So you might imagine this could be a place for um, ice cream, soda, uh, I'm sorry, ice cream, like a, a brew pub, uh, things like that, other ideas that people have talked about recently, or a bike shop, a bike rental facility, you know, right on the bike trail. The um, by the way, I wanna, I wanted to draw your attention to this here. It looks like a Christmas tree. I'm gonna get into a, a much more detailed look at that in a few moments. The bigger thematic thing I wanted to say, though, is besides this concept of a town center, there is an element of naturalized adaptation to sea level rise. Um, we've talked about this as a blue-green park, and we've showed multiple images over the past year of how Kellums Field and this area could be designed as a way to mitigate sea level rise and flooding, capture it, make an amenity out of it, out of it. Um, so you could see like this would be water, this light green or blue area would be water snaking through a passive park with berms and marshes and open spaces. And still you have plenty of room for the, the football field and the baseball field as they exist largely today. So this is an opportunity to create something that solves a sea level rise issue. And really, you know, this land is in many respects being returned to nature now, or nature is reclaiming this estuary. So this acknowledges that underlying reality. Um, however, where this town center idea is, is, is up higher. It's at elevation seven already. It's out of the impact zone of sea level rise. That's gonna be largely in this area that I'm circling, largely on Kellums Field proper. All these other buildings that are just white and black lines, they all exist today. This is the same pattern that largely exists. The, uh, here, over here is the water park, um, you know, we, we didn't make any proposals for changes to that. But I do want to point out that at the end of Gordon Stinnet, there would be a redesign of the tot lot. And of course, you probably know that there's thinking about that now, and the town engineer is looking at different concepts. The town was awarded a grant. Um, and there's the sort of the short-term upgrading the um, tot lot, updating the equipment, making it more user-friendly and safer, and, and introducing elements for uh, the seniors as well as kids. But there's a longer-term vision too, that seeks to move the park and the recreational amenity up to the end of the street. Rather than separating the park from um, the street with the parking lot as it, it, as exists now, we could actually move the parking lot over here, bring the playground further away from the back of the townhouses, so it feels like a standalone park, integrate it more into Kellums Field, uh, and put a, a major design feature like those shades, there's a sailing shade structures or some other major features, so it terminates the view down Gordon Stinnet. So even as you drive past on Bates High Road and you look west, you see this uh, bit of architecture that draws your eye to it, and established the, the playground and the tot lot as a real park amenity for the entire town. And you see, we've combined so many different elements in this area and made it far more useful and active, which is um, something that's certainly called for. So the other thing I wanted to mention was, here's a more detailed view of this concept. There's Santa Claus. There's Santa Claus. I thought it would make you happy. The there's the Christmas tree that I mentioned earlier. And so what we're talking about is this location where my, where I'm circling now, facing that tree. This is open space largely, and these are of course buildings. What this then becomes is an area for outdoor activities and festivals that the town could celebrate its heritage, or, you know, it could be Oktoberfest party, festival. It could be outdoor Christmas market that is, you know, a very prevalent activity in many European towns that are the same size as Chesapeake Beach. It could be a variety of different things. And you can see the buildings on the right-hand side and then the natural park on the left-hand side that absorbs the water and addresses sea level rise. And then these could be pop-up pavilions. We've actually shown some real structures, small buildings that are cottages that are designed to reflect the heritage of the cottage community that Chesapeake Beach and North Beach are. And these could actually be pavilions replacing those big park pavilions that exist there now. They could actually be open-air pavilions, or they could be smaller, you know, shops. But the key is to scale things down and make a nice transition to the natural area in the wetlands. So I think it's important to have some type of visual reference point like this in the comprehensive plan. So the plan is not all simply about words and nicely worded objectives, but it has some content to it. It shows what it is that we mean when we're talking about town center. And again, this is not a town center master plan. There's much more that would go into a plan. But it's reflective of the major elements of a new reimagined Kellums Field and town center. Now the town would have a center of activity and business development and vibrancy that is apart from and separate from the the resort, which is really the main location for economic activity. But it doesn't have to be that way. There could be a great town center that people who go to the resort can walk to. It creates, it builds on the tourism ethic that's been created here. So that's what in part this is seeking to achieve. And with that, I'll just pause. And if you have any questions, let me know, or any comments or critiques. This is still a draft, so we can make further refinements to it. In fact, we fully intend to, so.
Okay, well, let's go around the room, see what comments or thoughts we have. Start with Kathleen. Any thoughts on this presentation?
Yes. Well, I love the pictorial, and I agree with you, Chris. I think it's you know, people, a lot of people are visual learners and they really can't, they can read, but they can't visualize. So I think it's really important to have the additional content of the pictures to, you know, also included in the comprehensive plan. I guess my question was, in regard to the Gordon Stinnet where the tot lot, when I read that, it said it would occlude the view of the water, and I wasn't sure what that meant. I mean, is it, I would imagine it's still aesthetically pleasing to have those, like that tent-like, sail-like, I guess, for lack of better words, lean-to or defining area. But I didn't, I wasn't sure, the way it read to me, it didn't seem like a positive thing that the water view would be occluded. So could you just talk a little bit about that?
I'm not quite sure I understand, but is not positive that you wouldn't, that you would have a view to the water?
Well, it, when I read it, it said that along Gordon Stinnet with the tot lot, that it would block, you would lose the view of the water.
Oh, no. Yeah, that wasn't, certainly not my intent. And I don't know that I, I certainly didn't say that, but that may have been the meaning you got from it based on the way I worded it, but it wasn't the intent. It was basically saying that this structure here would, oh, I said terminate the view. In other words, it would, if you're up here on Bayside as you travel down Gordon Stinnet, that's all you see. You, I mean, you see the forest behind you and the wetlands in the distance, but you see an attractive park feature ahead of you that draws the eye and kind of moves you along to something really spectacular. That's what, that's what I meant to say. It terminates your view. It's what you see at the end of the street. It's the church steeple you see when you turn the corner, you know, in a small town.
It kind of focuses your view. It brings your view to the, directs you to there.
Yes, focuses your view. That's right.
Thank you.
Jonathan, any comments?
Yeah, I think it looks great, and I could definitely see a lot of benefit in a lot of these ideas. I saw that a lot of the property is already owned by Chesapeake Beach. So my main question would be, what do we need to do to make this a reality, basically?
Yeah, without getting into a lot of details, it would basically mean that the town would be an active partner in revitalization and redevelopment, which is not unusual at all. I helped the city of Salisbury redevelop its historic downtown. It owned all these parking lots. And I said, why don't we attract developers here and tell them what it is that we want, write the request for proposals, and allow developers to bid. And whatever project looks the best and meets our needs the best, will get the land at substantially reduced price. But they're delivering what it is we want. They're, you know, we're building, we're designing a town to achieve a purpose. And we're adding tax base, so it's, you know, it's perfect. Of course, there are other ways of doing that, that, you know, public-private partnerships. There are a variety of ways, Jonathan. But that's one approach that works quite well.
Okay, so basically we need to kind of give you an approval and a consensus that we all like the concept, and then we can move forward with starting to try to obtain these ideas, make them a reality.
Well, I guess the the entity that gives us the approval would be the town council if and when they approve the comprehensive plan. And once the plan is approved, then they would get into the implementation steps. Where they would assign the planning commission the job of doing it. But certainly, our job right now is to prepare the, an overall plan with broad policies and it's and to recommend it to the mayor and council. But once it's adopted, yeah, this could be their first priority, conceivably. It may not be, and this may take a full 20 years or longer to develop, and it may never actually look entirely like this. But it, there are a lot of elements here that a community can connect with and insist on. And those are the essential things. Where a building is located is less important than achieving the character and the feel and the amount of open space and the use of the park and things like that.
Okay, well, I think I agree with a lot of the ideas. I don't really have any oppositions.
Jeff, Jeff Larson, any thoughts?
I really appreciate the visualization because I, I'm one of those people that need to see a picture like this, and it's really helped me. So and I really appreciate the fact that you delineated the new stuff from the old stuff. And so the Traders Parking Lot, that wouldn't be a deal killer if that never happened, right?
A deal killer?
Well, I mean, that's not the entire linchpin of this thing. Unless it all happened, even if that never, never came to be.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. I mean, what I like about it is it it puts a building that's comparable in character to the town hall right up on the street, creating a sense of enclosure and a gateway into this space. I suspect at some point that huge, those two huge parking lots are going to have more economic value for another business or another commercial entity or something like that. We don't know when or how, but at some point Traders or whoever owns that property in the future may want to develop it. And if they do, I think this is a better design than, you know, a car wash. So yeah, but the town center doesn't hinge on that at all. The town center's is much more than that building or two.
Well, I like it. I appreciate that. That's helped me a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, Cindy, any thoughts?
Um, I do like the utilization of that, of that property that way. I think we could have a parking problem. I don't see where there's extra parking added. I don't know where you would park for the ball field, for example. Those are little details you need to, you know, to really bring out here. And I'm a little worried about the egress basically coming out onto 261. We've got two, the Stinnet Road is going to be more impacted, of course, coming out onto 261. And then, of course, you're going to have the new entrance right there by the town hall. So you're going to have some, you know, more traffic issues, maybe some backing up if there's some kind of event going on. So there's some little things to work out there, but I like the idea of utilizing that area in the back, keeping the fields, keeping it as not so intense. I don't want to see this very intense. But I like the idea of utilizing that property more effectively and for more benefit for the whole community. I think it's a great idea, a great start, a great start. So I think, I don't know how much more we want to develop this, but I think the idea is great. I like it.
Okay, and Lori, Lori, any thoughts?
Okay, so Chris, this is much more in keeping the things that I like compared to the high-capacity building. So I really like this drawing. I agree with Cindy about the parking, but for now, I think that your memo and this drawing brings up a good point because we have the playground and and a project that's getting ready to get started. And so you mentioned RFPs, and the way I view this is maybe like a two-part type or a two-step process, where the first process is we RFP the playground, the field, the paths around it, and in the RFP include, you know, please identify space where we might develop buildings. You know, leave those off. Those are open space. There's still parking or whatever. But for now, I think we could RFP this area and get some cool ideas for playground equipment that could also be a focal point. Some, you know, ideas about how to deal with parking and paths. And for step one, it is just a park to begin with. And we ask that bidder to keep in mind that we want a town center in the future perhaps, and to identify places, you know, where down the road we might do that. And so I love this concept, and I love the drawing. I would rather have your drawings all throughout the comprehensive plan than any picture. Because I think they're better able to show what we want. I think both pictures have done a good job. The eye little picture with the with the wetland type of transitional you know, landscape in the back. I just really like that. So I would love to recommend to the town to RFP this whole area, including the playground for that project. That would be, I think that would, you know, really get this area started if we could do that. So I don't know, I don't know how far along any of that is, but that's something that I've been advocating is just RFPing the the field, the playground, the path, and in that, we could include identify a space for future development of commercial amenities. So I don't, I'd be interested to know what anybody else thought about that, Chris. I think this is a really good idea.
Good, thank you. And we could offer recommendations in Land Use Chapter for Implementation. You know, it's sort of, so it provides some sense of how it is that the town council could go about achieving something like this over the long term. We can outline that without being too specific. We don't want to box them in, but we could certainly provide guidance like you're talking about.
Can I? I think that concludes this discussion. We'll build on it in the second half of the November 12th meeting. Cindy's going to talk about some ideas on zoning that she would like to propose at that time. Is there any other comments before we? I don't see any any public here. Is there anyone from the public that wants to make a comment statement?
I have a comment.
All right, go ahead. First, state your name. Who is it?
Yeah, it's Councilman Greg Morris.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. I wanted to mention to you, it's been a great meeting tonight. There's really a lot of meat here. We need to commend all Jenny for being here and her presentation. And what I just saw there from Chris was surprised. I didn't realize that we were working on something like that. That's great. Larry, don't beat yourself up or your group up too bad about what might be a perceived lack of progress with the comprehensive plan. It has been a crazy year. We all know that. And I always try to tell my kids it's better to be, get there late and get there safe and get there right in one piece. You know, that's certainly I think most important thing there. I wanted to touch base on something that Mr. Evans said. And that's with the permit for those couple of high-rising expiring, and if the town is clearly moving to 35-foot height, they could find themselves, they got to be careful there because it might end up being inappropriate to extend that permit now. Times change, and the town is obviously changing here. It seems to be the will of the residents and the taxpayers of this body here, at least for right now. The 35-foot seems to be very attractive. And if developers have missed a timeframe in making that happen, I don't know, that might be, I would just suggest tread carefully there. I'm a little concerned about, I know you all have a full plate, given the length of time that you took trying to fit the meetings together for December. I think it's appropriate to bring up this Airbnb matter. There seems to be a 30-day ban on enforcing prohibiting short-term rentals in town. I'm not really sure what that means. It's not something the council was involved with. The enforcement of barring short-term rentals in this town seems to be a new thing. In that we haven't been enforcing them, existing rules that we seem to be hanging our hat on. And there are going to be people that are going to want to know why. I had heard, we're being told, it's a planning and zoning, the planning and zoning is postponing this particular matter regarding Airbnbs till after the election. And I can understand both sides of taking that position. But what I, I just want to leave you with something to think about on that. What is it exactly that's being delayed? What is the action item here for planning and zoning, and in whose direction? We're told that it's a planning and zoning matter regarding short-term rentals not being, suddenly not being allowed despite code. I'm glad it's not, and I'm glad it's not in the housing code because it was not the intent of this town council to explicitly bar short-term rentals. In hindsight, in hindsight, we missed a valuable opportunity to really have an open discussion on this. And I hope that it's one of the first priorities of the new council to address this because it seems to me that the town unequivocally needs to decide what it wants to do. because it seems to me that the town unequivocally needs to decide what it wants to do with short-term rentals. And it needs to change the code. It needs to change the zoning code, housing code. They need to be complementary. But more important than that, they need to be unambiguous. I don't think the town, they're just not, it, that's something that kind of needs to be in flashing lights in a way. We do not allow short-term rentals, period, and this is what they are. Something, we need to eliminate all ambiguity in it, and when we decide one way or the other. And so, I'm a little concerned with that being put to the back burner, given your full plate. There's so much that you have to deal with, with the comprehensive plan, and I commend everybody on that. I want to thank all of you for your volunteerism in this. The planning and zoning is, and all of our committees are very important. But I, you know, over the four years, one thing that I've had concern about is some continuity with the Planning and Zoning Board. And I know things happen and people drop off, and sometimes people sign up for things, and they don't realize how much work there may be involved, and that they can't have the time to contribute like they need to and like this town deserves. So, I know that's a lot, and I hope I didn't put my foot in my mouth on anything. I do that once in a while. I'll never be a professional planner, town planner. We're all here trying to fill our roles and to do what's best for residents and taxpayers and what their will is. So, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Let me break in a second. The short-term rentals came up, I believe Jonathan brought it up, at our last meeting, maybe, maybe a meeting before that, but it's, that's the first time that it's come up while I've been a commissioner, and I really didn't see it as something on our plate, particularly since it's a very hot political issue that, and from my perspective, the town council needs to give us some direction on which way they want us to go. If they want us to start writing zoning restrictions or whatever, but it hasn't frankly been on my plate. And I was kind of waiting to see how this election turned out, to see what was going on. But no one, except Jonathan did bring it up, I think the last meeting, is a potential issue. But I deferred it that time, because it seems to me to be more in the, into politics than in administration. But it may be something that we have to deal with again here soon. But if the commissioners want to bring it up, we'll put it on the agenda for the future.
That's actually one of the things I was going to email you about the second December meeting.
Okay, all right. There's something we could...
I'd like to second what you're saying. I think this is entirely the town council's decision. Unless we're going to zone an area that allows BnBs through the zoning ordinance, what happened was the town council, you know, the short-term rentals, I think, are designated as a C on, as a conditional use, and that's the same use as the garage sale in the zoning ordinance now. And the town council then wrote an ordinance about short-term rentals, and they can write an ordinance about short-term rentals again. And even if we zoned the whole town to allow for short-term rentals, it would still end up being up to the town council. So, I think that we should have a discussion before we make a decision like that, and I'd be happy to have that discussion, and I would be happy to weigh in on what I think about that whole thing, but I don't think that it's a planning and zoning issue. So, that's my thought.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else want to comment?
I think it is a planning and zoning, I mean, we don't make the final decision on it, of course, but I think we could certainly prepare a report, get some feedback, get some, you know, have the public weigh in. It's a very involved subject. It's not going to be one meeting. I know that for a fact, because I've been dealing with this over, you know, different parts of the country. The entire country is dealing with this issue. It's a huge problem. I won't say a problem. I will just say it's a huge issue that's going to take a long time to work on. So, I'm very happy to, if Jonathan wants to agendize that for a meeting, I'm certainly willing to go along with agendizing it and starting that whole discussion. It's a big one.
Well, it's, we can provide a forum for the public to express their views on it, and that might be very helpful in, to the town council in making a decision. Of course, they can listen to it, the town council meetings, but something, we'll look at that as a future agenda item. Anyone else?
Well, I think we should go back to what Jonathan was at. He was asking to agendize it. I don't mind, I just think we could wait till January, because December is going to be a very busy time. But I would certainly be happy to address it or start working on it in January, if that's what Jonathan would like to do.
That's fine with me. Is there any way we could get a public forum in between there at some point? Is that something that we need to be involved with or attend?
I don't have an answer. I mean, our public...
You mean a public hearing. You mean a public hearing, I think. You mean a public hearing, right?
Whatever Larry was saying about the public forum and having people weigh in their opinions.
Yeah, a public hearing. So, basically, you want to agendize it, and then you want to have a public hearing where the public comes in and addresses it. That's why I think if you're going to do this, it should wait till January when people are available and they are able to come to the meetings, because not everybody will be available, you know, in December to do this. There's a lot of desire to weigh in on this particular issue. So, I think you should wait till January if you really want to complete a discussion on this.
That's fine with me.
To that end, I would suggest that the Planning Commission approach town administration as far as extending whatever it is they're extending right now, and not cracking down or not enforcing these. I think that it's hurting a lot of people, and that was one thing that I didn't want to see. And with all due respect, I know how full your plate is, and you're trying to fit everything in here in the right way. I just don't want to see it get kicked down the road too far. Don't take that the wrong way, Cindy. I think ultimately...
No, I just want to do justice by this issue. I don't want to be neglectful on it. But I also don't like it's not enforcing what are our current rules and regulations and policies. And I know that it is in the policy, so I hate, I hate the idea of just not enforcing something, because, you know, there are a few people that are not making money on it. There are people that also haven't purchased property in this town because of that particular policy. So, you know, what is fair? What is fair is enforcing what is currently the regulation and the laws. You know, we shouldn't be just not enforcing.
Well, my point, my observation, again, this could be my foot in my mouth, but the town hasn't been enforcing it all these years, and suddenly they've decided to start enforcing it. And that is a question for a lot of people. So, I appreciate your attention to this matter. Again, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I only have one comment. It's on a different topic, though. I just wanted to ask, Larry, you said that you had taken the open training. Can, for the open meeting training, if you can't do it all in, it was, you said, two, two and a half hours, if you can't complete it in that time, are you able to save it as you go along, or must you have the full time to the training?
According to the website, you can do whatever you have time and then come back and redo it. You have, because it's driven by computer cookies, you have to be on the same computer and the same, I guess, email address, but it explains that when you check on, that yes, you can break it up into segments. There are like six or seven separate chapters to the training, and you can do, you know, one of those in 15, 20 minutes, I think. So, they aren't, they aren't real arduous. It's just reading stuff, and then they give you a short quiz at the end of each section. And yes, you can check off and come back. But I think the limit is it has to be done within 30 days, if I recall.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Well, if there is nothing else, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Is anyone opposed? Hearing nothing, we have unanimous approval to adjourn. Thank you very much. Get out a schedule of what's happening here soon.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Bye, Chris.
Bye, everybody.